Township Precipity Troy Hills, regular township council meeting, August 20th, 2013. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10th, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on December 14th, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13th, 2012, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 10th, 2012. In addition, adequate notice of the location change of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on July 22nd, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on July 22nd, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to the Star Ledger, Precipity Life, and local radio stations on July 29th, 2013. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, public access Channel 21 at 12:00 PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Council President Stanton.
Here.
Absent Mr. Farrar, also present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lynn Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli Assistant Business Administrator, John Angasino Escar, Township Attorney, Yancy Azirmis Township Clerk. Please rise for a flag salute, Mr. DePiero.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meeting, September 10th, 2013, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting at Precipity Hills High School, public invited, public participation. September 17th, 2013, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, Precipity Hills High School, public invited, public participation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel and potential litigation.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas township council, in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, litigation, whereas minutes will be kept once a matter involving confidentiality, of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by township Precipity Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting. Motion by myself.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Motion to reconvene into open session by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Bids to be taken, August 29th, 2013, 11:00 AM, standby natural gas engine, 250 KW generator, two automatic transfer switches, two remote indicator panels for Fire District III. Ordinance, second reading, public hearing, ordinance 2013, calling 23, Mr. DePiero.
Ordinance 2013, calling 23, an ordinance of the township Precipity Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing the establishment of a government energy aggregation program. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, on July 22nd, 2013.
Motion by Mr. DePiero. No second, ordinance 2013, calling 23, fails, no second motion. Ordinance 2013, calling 24, Mr. Krefi.
An ordinance of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, in the County of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various sewer utility improvements for the township of Precipity Troy Hills and appropriating $4,400,000, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $3,325,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Precipity Troy Hills to finance the same. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, on July 22nd, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Krefi.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up this ordinance to the public. Motion by Mr. Nelson, open to public, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, at this time, I'll open the ordinance 2013, calling 24, to the public. Sir, you'll be given three minutes on this subject.
Several years ago, I appeared before this council complaining about various contaminants that were contained in the water. In response to one of that evening, I passed a remark saying there was over a million and a half dollars that was being reserved for the sewer. And I said at that time, will we be getting this money back? And if you recall, the money was going to be held in reserve because we had an old sewer in operation, we were concerned that something was going to happen, the newer sewer was going to come online. And at that time, when I asked the question, they said, don't worry, I said, are you sure or is the discombobulator going to be broken and we're not going to get the money back? I was assured that we were going to get the money back. And at that point, it was about a million and a half. It's now, I don't even know what the number is. But for the past three years, a portion of that reserve has been used to pay, to balance the budget. Now, for those of us, and most of us here, itemize, we itemize the real estate taxes that are paid. We cannot itemize, we cannot use as a deduction the sewer and the water. And yet, a portion of that money, which is our taxes, we can't deduct. Now, if you're going to tell me it would only amount to a few, a few dollars, or whatever it is, by way of deduction in my income tax, I once received a bill because we had transcribed numbers, the exact opposite, and I remember the bill I received, and it wasn't under this administration, it was something like 58 cents instead of 85, and the letter I received was actually more than the money that I owed. So it is a few dollars that were here. Now, I recently heard, or read, that somebody said, we have to have $5 million in reserve. And the question I have is, is that a fabricated number? Is that a number off the top of the list? But we need $5 million. I would assume that that $5 million was a figure that somebody figured out why we would have to have $5 million. If you were making a decision on an estate plan or whatever...
30 seconds, sir.
We paid $15,000 to have that decision made, to hold $5 million, money that we should have gotten back and promised back for us.
Mr. Rosenthal, may I respond to your concerns, and thank you for your concerns. Phil Boba, who's the superintendent of sewer, is the one that recommended we keep $5 million in surplus for contingency, for anything that's catastrophic, basically de-watering of sludge. If that process were to fail, it would be approximately $4 million upfront to fix that situation. The beginning of this year, though, we did, and I don't know if this is what you're alluding to, we did give a rebate back of $1.5 million to the ratepayer in the first quarter of 2013 on the sewer surplus. And we also reduced the fixed rate on the sewer, the sewer fee, because that is the rate that pretty much affects senior citizens more than any. We didn't do the variable, we're going to see in the future if we can reduce the variable as well, and the rate even further as, as the plant progresses further. And that was a recommendation of $5 million to keep in the sewer treatment plan for surplus by our superintendent of, who does an outstanding job. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Seeing nobody else come forward, I'd like to entertain a motion to carry this public hearing and to vote till September 17th. Trust me. All right, I'm making a motion that we carry the public hearing and vote till September 17th. Before we do that, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
We don't have the votes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
When this ordinance was introduced last month, Councilman DePiero's words were that it would be irresponsible to table it. I'm going to live up to his words, and I say no.
We're closing out the public portion.
Oh, wait.
This is just a public...
I take that back, you know, that comment will be reserved in 30 seconds. Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
So we have a motion?
Okay, I'd make a motion that we carry the public hearing and vote till September
Okay, motion fails, roll call.
Thank you. Anyone have any further discussion on this?
We're getting, we're getting, I will second the motion to carry the ordinance.
Okay, motion by myself, second to carry till September 17th meeting by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
At the last meeting, when this ordinance was introduced, Councilman DePiero said that would be irresponsible to table it. I'm going to hold him to those words, and I say no.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, motion passes three to one, carry till September 17th meeting.
Okay, Mr. Council President, if I may, Madam Clerk, it wasn't, it was a motion to carry, wasn't a motion to table. What that means is, is that the public discussion, public hearing portion for this ordinance will be carried until September 17th, which I believe is the next regular council meeting, correct? The ordinance should be republished, and public notice of the hearing should be given again, the way you did for tonight's meeting, okay?
Okay, yep.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open this to the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, open this to public, second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, before we get going, I just have a quick question for the public. The Water View is for September 17th meeting, open to the public. I just want, get pretty much a head count, how many people plan on getting up today to speak?
Mr. Council President, if I may, just for purposes of clarification to the public, just so the public understands the procedural aspects of adopting an ordinance. An ordinance requires two readings in order to be adopted. Tonight, on the agenda for ordinance introduction, is the Water View ordinance for first reading, which means the ordinance would be introduced. At the September 17th meeting, as the Council President indicated, is the night of the second reading and public hearing. On September 17th, every member of the public who wants to comment on this ordinance will be provided an opportunity to do so at the public hearing for this ordinance, which will be on September 17th. Tonight, the public portion of the meeting is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter whatsoever. It could be Water View, it could be any matter whatsoever. So you will be permitted to address the council tonight on Water View or any other subject. But again, the public hearing portion of these deliberations is on September 17th, and that is the evening when there will be a short presentation that will be made by the township planner, there will be a short presentation made with respect to traffic issue, as well as, as indicated at the last meeting, a presentation made with regard to fiscal impact. Tonight is not the night for any of that, because tonight is, is only the introduction phase of this process. The rest of it will occur on September 17th at the public hearing and second reading of the ordinance. If the ordinance is, is voted in the affirmative by the council on the 17th, then and only then will the ordinance be, will be passed by the council, and then would require the signature of the mayor in order to become effective.
Okay, tonight's public session is going to be limited to 90 minutes, and each person will be given three minutes to speak. Please, non-Water View issues first, thank you.
I'm Mary Prezicki, 273 Marcella Road. I have a question about, on the resolutions, 2013-172, authorizing the execution of an electric, electric distribution aggregation agreement, what is that?
Yes, Ms. Prezicki, that will be pulled. That was a resolution, you beat me to it. If you're looking for a job in the law office, you should, I'm only kidding. Very good catch on your part.
How much do you pay?
That, that pertained to the energy aggregation ordinance, which did not get a second. So therefore, R 2013-172 should be pulled from the consent agenda, and I was going to advise the council of that, of that at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any possibility in the future that, that this might be coming back so that the public could be more aware of the situation, since I believe the way the extensive education plan was handled was rather poor to get a pamphlet, a flyer in the mail with residential customer name on it, no name, no address, in the junk mail, where most of it wound up in the recycle bins of people, or they did not get it. So due diligence, I think, should be done if and when this is ever brought up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
mailing address. My question is regarding that last ordinance, or the one that was retracted for the electric distribution. Can anybody inform me what we paid the consultant to go out and do this panel?
I haven't paid.
We haven't paid anything.
You haven't paid anything for that?
No.
Okay. I just wanted some clarity on that, because, you know, I've already made my electric choice, and I don't want to be paying for somebody to do the job for me. Secondly, regarding the tabling of the sewer ordinance, those bonds, from my understanding, the township's looking for, what, 3.3 million in new bonds for that? So we're going to table that with the interest rates continuing to rise, which we tabled it before, with the interest rates rising? So any, any type of idea what that net impact's going to be, considering the interest rates have moved now a point, point and a half since it was first discussed? As a taxpayer, I just want to know what that, what that impact is.
We'll get the information.
Sure. Talking about the water sewer, I live over in that wonderful area over in Intervale, Water View, and, you know, I have one of those whole-house water filtration systems. I don't want a rebate for my water, I just want clean water. In 30 days, the whole-house filter went from this to this.
Speak into the mic, please.
Okay, in 30 days, my water went from this in the whole-house filter to this, and usually these things last about 90 days in a normal community. I'm just curious as to, with a potential building on the wellheads that supply the area, just how dirty my water's going to be after we do this, after we do this building project. I'm hoping that there's a water survey that's being done, in addition to the traffic and everything else going on.
I mean, I guess, sir, just to address, sort of site impact, you know, questions are appropriately addressed to the planning board at the site plan phase. The zoning process is a legislative process, so for those of you who are familiar with, you know, planning board procedures, where you see, you know, plans and experts testify and so forth and so on, that's not what this process is. This is a land planning and zoning process. So your issue, you know, pertains to impact on the site, which is a matter to be addressed by the planning board at the planning board phase. I make that comment because, you know, I just want the public to be informed in terms of, of what this process is all about.
Okay, John, I appreciate that.
Sir, your three minutes are up, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
Pat Farin, 23 Lakeside Drive. I just would like to address the town council with regards to Manor Lake Round Two. I spoke at the last town meeting, asking whether or not you had any plans on putting on the agenda for this town council, the dredging of Manor Lake and the repair of the dam. And if so, at what point may we expect that agenda to be put on the town council plan?
We're waiting to get approval from the DEP on Manor, on Manor, is that Manor? On Manor Lake. I will speak to the township engineer tomorrow to see how long, how far along we are in that process. We discussed it, I discussed it last week with them. I don't know if you know, but DEP moves like a turtle, and we're trying everything in our power to get these, this approved, so I will, in fact, after the meeting, if you can give me your contact number, I will have the engineer contact you or myself.
Well, we've been in contact with the engineer for the last couple of years with little success or help on getting anything accomplished, so if you can move that along, I'd really appreciate it.
In fact, then contact me.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Council President, just one quick, quick question for Jasmine. Jasmine, with the Rutgers University study with Troy Brook, what was the recommendations, or if you, if you know what the recommendations were for Manor Lake?
I don't know, I can find out.
Good evening, Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to know how the brown space inventory, all the idle, already developed dead space that Precipity harbors, is playing into this equation of a, another development that's not wanted, not, not necessary, it's being jammed down our throat by RDR. But Mayor Barbario, I was on the internet today, and I saw an article from 1030, 2009, and it says here, Barbario believes he will win in part because he trusts he has a better vision for Precipity. Now, your opponent at the time was Mayor Luther. Now, Mayor Luther declared that he was against impractical overdevelopment projects, he was for additional open space, and he was interested in new ways to control traffic congestion. Now, I want to know which of these aspects of his political agenda that you apparently are against or are for.
Nick, I've said on several occasions, I'm in favor of due process. I've said that from day one, and you even stated that one other time. Due process, that anyone that owns a piece of property should be able to come forward to either the planning board and now the council. And that's what I'm in favor of, due process. If it gets voted, the overlay, overlay ordinance gets voted in, then they do process. If not, they still had the due process to be heard, and that's what I've said all along.
Well, I hope it goes as far as due process and that's it, because it's a loss of place, and it's a loss of home if RDR is allowed to do this. There is no good reason, other than work for work's sake, to give somebody a job for a short period of time, and that's it, and then the land...
How can you say for a short period of time?
30 seconds, sir.
A short period of time.
You don't, you know, you see, you're talking about jobs in Precipity, okay? And as the mayor, I get information every year, and I've stated this, and I've stated the two individuals from Intervale, I've stated it on other occasions, from the last consensus in Precipity, just so you know, our poverty level has increased. So when you say that it's only temporary jobs, that's not true, it's not temporary. You have individuals that will build, build it, but then jobs come with it later on.
But it's, you...
But it's not, but why? I don't know what, the jobs aren't substance? Maybe those jobs, maybe those jobs have, people have families in Precipity, that that one extra part-time job gets them through their life, gets to feed their family.
Why, why can't we find...
But, but, but you keep saying to me in regards to, oh, jobs, and you're saying they're minimal jobs.
I'm not here talking about jobs, I'm here about talking about...
I have no problem ending the public session if I'm going to keep hearing people call them from the public. You get your chance to come up, that's when you speak.
It's not about jobs, Mayor, it's about the quality of life and the sense of place.
You said, but you did say to me, sir, you did say to me that the temporary jobs is what you said, and that's what, that's all it's going to be.
Because your program is you're creating jobs.
Thank you.
Stephanie Eckert, I'm at 320 East Halsey Road in Precipity, I just have one quick question. Mayor, all these jobs are guaranteed for Precipity residents, is that what you're saying? Every one of them? I have to tell you, this is...
I'll let you finish, sure.
One second. It's our home, and I understand that jobs are important, but these are temporary jobs, it's with the instruction, but not every, I can't worry about everybody. We have to put our own city first, our own town. So I'm just tired of hearing jobs, because are you guaranteeing, I'm glad you're saying you're guaranteeing, everybody who's going to get a job there?
No, you can't guarantee that.
Okay, that's all I wanted to ask.
That's fine, either or, either or.
Fay Wedoson, One Winding Way, in Precipity.
I don't care if you...
I'm too tall.
Ma'am, if you'd like to take it out and just...
There you go.
There you go.
For us vertically unchallenged people, right? Fay Wedoson, One Winding Way, in Precipity. So I have three things to ask you, specifically about due process. So part of the process is you, as a council, making the recommendation to pass the ordinance, is that correct? Is that the first part?
No, it's not a recommendation. In order to pass an ordinance, there's a few steps that have to be taken.
Okay, and when you talk, does that count against my three minutes?
No, go ahead, process, I'll put that down.
Ask your three first.
Can he ask, and then?
Yeah, ask your three, and then we'll...
So, so as part of that process, when you guys are thinking about if you're... So, so as part of that process, when you guys are thinking about if you're gonna pass it or not pass it, which obviously I hope you're not going to, I sincerely hope you take into consideration, even though you said it was part of the planning board and, you know, the whole water pollution that my neighbor brought and showed you in thirty days, the sludge in his home. You really need to take that into consideration in all of the process, not just the back end, okay? You guys have to take this stuff into, ooh, into consideration upfront as well, okay? Secondly, I understand, Mayor, that your concern is helping people in Precipiny put food on the table, get jobs. And while it's very impressive, all these boys in blue, I'm pretty sure a lot of them don't live in Precipiny, all right? Number one. Number two, number two, surely, and my neighbor who asked the question before about how many people in Precipiny are gonna be employed, okay, is there perhaps a better way as a town to use that land, you know, and I don't know, maybe build a new college or, or look into, in terms of, of, you know, how you guys can help retrain Precipiny? Because the jobs that are coming are gonna be minimum wage jobs. They're gonna be minimum wage jobs. And that does not help anyone get out of poverty. So perhaps you guys are thinking about this the wrong way, all right?
Okay. In terms of the process, there's a few steps that have to be taken. They don't make, the council doesn't make a recommendation. The first process is tonight, consideration of the introduction of the ordinance. Assuming that the ordinance is introduced, then it will be referred to the planning board. The planning board will then consider whether or not the proposed zoning ordinance conforms with the township's existing master plan.
So can I, can I interrupt you for a quick second? As part of the introduction, is it your job as a council to take all of this into consideration before it goes anywhere near the planning board?
No, 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 no.
So what is your responsibility as our town council to take into consideration before you move it along?
Well, again, what the council takes into consideration is up to them. This is a piece of legislation. It's a legislative process.
Okay.
So first step is introduction. Second step is referral to the planning board for master plan consistency. Third step is then back to the council for a public hearing and vote on whether to adopt the ordinance or not.
Okay.
I will also point out, because you've made a point that I think I've heard from several other people, this land is not owned by the township. Precipiny does not own this property. So if Precipiny were to want to use this property, then Precipiny would have to purchase the property. And, you know, there, there hasn't been any discussion or proposal to do that. In fact, at the moment, the property is under contract to be sold to a prospective developer. So, so I just want to make sure that the public understands that the township does not own this property.
So why have there been no discussions about alternative use of this land from the council? As a resident of Precipiny, I want to know the answer to that question.
Well, it's under contract. I mean, I can, we can have alternative uses for it, but we're not purchasing it because it's under contract with somebody else.
But it's under-
Ma'am, ma'am, your time's up. They can answer.
Thank you.
Sorry.
If I may just clarify, if I just may just clarify, that the gentleman in blue over here, those are members of our police department. They're not members of the, I just wanted to clarify that.
But I hope the residents of the town, I hope. I hope so. So, my name is Arnie Berg. I live at three eighty-three East Halsey Road, Precipiny. Lived here for fifty-four years. As to the use, the owner gets to choose how he wants to use it, as long as he goes with the board and the regulations. You know, we don't have too much to say. If you want to put something there, well, you buy it. If you don't want a neighbor, they should have bought it. My next question is too, is Mountain Lakes people being allowed to talk about a Precipiny item? It was. Why is it?
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat questioning?
I want to know if Mountain Lakes people are, are being allowed to talk about a Precipiny issue.
Yes, under, under law, the, the, the subject is open to the public, not just Precipiny residents, but to any interested member of the public.
Okay, that, that's cool. We do have people in this town that do need jobs, that are out of work now. I've worked on a couple of projects in this town, Embassy Suites being one of them, and that was twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five years ago. Hurts to say that. Oh, shit. Oh, sorry about that. Anywho, we have a lot of people, we, I am in a union. It's right on fifty Precipiny Road. We have over four hundred guys out right now that want to work in this town, pay taxes in this town, spend their lunch money, spend their breakfast money in this town, and we need that, okay? I find it hard to pay my taxes now with a job. Without a job, it would be harder. You know, I, I want the money to go, the taxes from this place is what, supposed to be around twenty, twenty-two million in twenty years? There was a study on that, okay? I don't want to lose that ratable. We need money for the town, the, the schools, the police that we need to put on. We're low on the police. We need that. Thank you for helping out there. I, I know, we know, we gotta get more police on this, but we need more money, okay? Nobody wants anything in her backyard. I was here, we were raising sheep and pigs in the sixties. I didn't have any neighbors around me. I got neighbors all around me. I watch it. This town is for progress. It's on forty-six. Do you think the traffic is ever gonna get better on forty-six? Who's got that pie in the sky? Never, never happened. Put an extra lane in there? Never happened, okay? Forty-six is what it is. Well, you're putting it on forty-six, where it belongs, okay? We can use a Whole Foods. We don't have any organic, they have small little sections in the shopping stores. We can use a whole organic store, okay? The people that say they won't be using it, when they're going home, need a gallon of milk, they're gonna stop there. Same with Target around Christmas. It's gonna be a nightmare. We know that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? Angelo Noceta, six twenty Lakeshore Drive. I'm also in favor of the program. I'd like to say that, you know, there will be work for us union guys to build it. And there also is gonna be work for part-time people, regardless of who may think what, some competent people will still have to fill those positions. Also, I'd like to ask, what's Precipiny making on that property right now? Nothing.
What, what?
Nothing.
It's vacant land, so the taxes will be nominal.
Exactly. So they'd still, Precipiny'd be making out on that. And how many projects has Whole Foods done that they failed at? I don't think any. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Mark Miller. I live on one fifteen Preston Road. I grew up here and it wasn't as much traffic as we have now, and I think that putting extra development, especially like a big box store, is gonna create more traffic. I'm a bike rider and I don't really want too much extra traffic. And I think also for the, for the jobs, I think it's, it's a tough economy, I understand that, but I think that being forced to accept any job, anytime, anywhere by, by Whole Foods is a form of arm twisting. They're, they're saying, well, if, if you don't want this development in this place at Waterview, then we're just gonna go somewhere else and you're screwed out of jobs. Well, that's not fair. And I don't think that we should be subjected to Whole Foods twisting our arms or any other big box store when there's vacant spots on the forty-six and places where they could put a place in. Maybe it wouldn't be as big, maybe it wouldn't be as brand new, but it would still be there and it would still be an option for, for them to have a, a store. And if, if not Whole Foods, then why not Trader Joe's? I mean, if, if Whole Foods wants a really big giant place and Trader Joe's is willing to settle for a good deal on a, on an empty building, then why not let them in? You can have jobs. You can have all kinds of jobs, but you don't have to build sprawl and, and have sprawling places that take up the pavement, pave the permula surfaces. And we also have to be considerate to the people downstream in Fairfield where the Passaic River often floods. The more water that you have running off of a parking lot on a steep slope like over at Waterview, all that water's gonna go into the Passaic River and it's gonna cause flooding downstream because ordinarily, right now, that water's going into the soil and it's being absorbed by the trees. And it, once you pave over that and you put in a parking lot, now you have more water going into the, into the rivers. And we often have flooding in Fairfield and places downstream. So we're not being courteous to our neighbors downstream by allowing this development up here. And it's also habitat for, for animals and, you know, maybe people don't care about that, but they have a place, they need a place to live also. I just don't see the point in doing this and we could also have a park there too, have a Whole Foods somewhere else, have another store somewhere else, build some low-income apartments somewhere else where there's, where there's place that's already available.
Thirty seconds, sir.
And then you have your jobs and you protect the environment at the same time. I think caving in to corporate extortion from Whole Foods or anyone else is, is a crime against the people, whether they're working people or unemployed or, or, or middle class or whoever. This country is, this isn't the only place where this is happening, so we're being taken advantage of by people saying, well, take these jobs or, or, or you're gonna be screwed. I, I just think that's unfair. And I don't think that anybody here should tolerate it, whether they're union, whether they're non-union, whoever they are, just why, why be pushed around by corporations? Unless we're getting money and, and people are getting paid off by this, and it's like Bell California, well, look what happened to them. They were corrupt and they all went to jail because the FBI busted them. Have a nice day.
Angela Pigary, Ten Winding Way. First, I would like to say that I am too a supporter of job creation and good union jobs, having come from a long line of family members who were union members, including myself. I'm also a supporter, a big supporter, of a living wage bill that I hope someday will get passed by the state legislature as well as the federal government. But this project that is being proposed, Waterview, will not bring in businesses that will create jobs that probably are not union jobs, for one thing, and will probably be minimum wage jobs at best. But this project, but this issue of Waterview is not a job-creating issue. If it were a job-creating issue, the town would, would be employing more police, more teachers, and other service members that would be servicing the township of Precipiny. This is about a project that the governing body of this town is forcing down the residents' mouths. It is a project that will change significantly the environment of this community for a long time to come. The residents of this town do not want this project, and I hope that you will keep that in mind.
Thank you. I'm Bob Bremerkamp. I live in Lake Precipiny, section of Precipiny, for eighteen years. I just have a quick question. I have read something on the internet and I don't always trust everything I read on the internet, so I just wanted to know if it's true that this parcel of land was actually originally a gift to Precipiny by the Dodge Foundation for the purpose of the town hall, and that it was in the eighties sold to a developer by the town of Precipiny for about twelve million, and that that developer is still active in this process because they have either bought or are consolidated with the developer to whom this property was originally sold by the town?
We look at you because you've been on the plan, the boy, though.
I, I've-
You are correct. Don't believe everything you read on the internet.
Am I correct in this information or just correct in the assumption I shouldn't believe the internet?
The township never owned that property, ever.
Was the property indeed bequeathed at any way to the township? And how did the township sell it to, how did the developer acquire it if not from the township?
The township never owned that property, never. How much plainer can I make it?
I'm, I asked you another question, then. How did the present developer acquire the property?
He bought it from the previous owner.
Who was the developer? Who developed supposedly the office park, which we have there now?
Who was that? I don't remember.
Sir, sir, sir.
Yeah, it probably was Bellmead. I, I don't remember.
Oh, okay, it probably was Bellmead. It's interesting that the history of this is so, such a blank. I, I don't understand that. Seems like it would be-
There's no blank that the township never owned it. That's clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, sir, if I might, who owns the property or who used to own the property is, is really not a, legally is not a relevant fact for the town council to consider. The issue that's before the town council is, is the zoning of the property. Now, I have requested and have just received and will be reviewing a title report for purposes of, you know, being able to determine whether there are any deed restrictions or anything of that nature that would impede or prohibit the development of the property. And I will be making that review certainly between now and the seventeenth. But for purposes of, of zoning, who owned the property when and who gave the property to who is, is really just not a relevant-
Sir, actually, I think it would be relevant for what you find out about that property's deed to be made public. I feel like that would be most interesting to the citizens of the town and could possibly be relevant legally.
Hello. My name is Bob Grebe. I lived in Precipiny for forty-seven years. I, I'm here to support this project. I'm a retired and on a fixed income. We need this project in Precipiny to grow Precipiny ratables. This project will help stabilize my Precipiny taxes. I also am a sprinkler fitter, a local six ninety-six from Newark. We installed the sprinkler system in the PAL building in Precipiny. I work with three other members who lived in Precipiny, two hours every night after our regular job and Saturdays until the job was finished. Who would come around and see us once in a while and shake our hands and said what a good job we were doing was Frank Lotenberg. And if he was here today, he would approve this project. As a Precipiny resident and voter, I ask Precipiny Town Council to approve this project. My wife and, Michael DePiro's wife are on the PTA together. I had three daughters, and his wife and my wife are on PTA together. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for working on that sprinkler system. We appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dooney. I'm living at three fourteen Midland Avenue in Pompton Lakes. However, I work across the street from where the Waterview development will be proposed. And the driveway will be directly across DSM, and we, I represent four hundred employees there. I'm the facility manager at DSM. I'm very concerned about the traffic. There's also another thousand employees at the two Mac Cali buildings at twenty Waterview and thirty-five Waterview. And I'm just wondering, the traffic that you proposed a light there, is that gonna be able to handle all those people as well as the people in the development? I, I seem to think that come five o'clock, people are gonna be waiting a half an hour to get turned left onto forty-six and get out of that development. turned left onto 46 and get out of that development. Do you have any information on the traffic at all?
I can address your question after you've finished.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. As I indicated at the outset, we envisioned a very brief presentation in regards to traffic just to provide some threshold information for the council to make a legislative determination on the zone. Traffic issues are evaluated at Planning Board during the site plan phase of the process. That is when traffic is reviewed and, you know, frankly, traffic would have to be reviewed in the context of specific engineered plans by town traffic consultants, et cetera, which is the ordinary process. So there will be some traffic information for the town to make a threshold decision with respect to zoning, but traffic issues in terms of lights and so forth, that would be thoroughly reviewed and evaluated at the site plan process.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to interrupt your solitary game there.
It's not a solitary game. It's notes that I took down prior to the meeting. It's an iPad 4, so I'll show it to you after the meeting, sir.
Good, good. I'll look forward to it. The last, my name is Ron Owens. I live at 154 Intervale Road. The last meeting I attended here, there was very serious conversation regarding the police, concern for having ample police, having police to do the job that has always been done, has always been done well. The fact that a patrolman coming on to the force needs a lot of training and everything. I'd like to know which of you who wants to consider voting on this tonight has read the studies on how many more police are needed for Big Box? For petty theft, for things that accompany this. This is not my paranoia. These are national studies, case after case after case. My big question for you, why do we have to decide this tonight? Why do we have to introduce this tonight? Why can't there be a six to 12-month moratorium to study all the facts? What is this, an oil painting here?
Sir, I can tell you that I have contacted other towns in reference to those towns that have Big Box stores and having worked in the sheriff's office, talking to law enforcement, there is no doubt that there will be an increase in crime and criminal activity.
Well, you know what I'll do, sir? I'll do our own study because if you really want a true statistic, other towns are different from Parsippany, so I think we can perform our own study.
That's right. Other towns are different. They said that this is too serious. This cannot be.
That's not what I'm saying.
I know that's not what you're saying and you should be saying it. Okay. My final question is, because I've heard this bounced around, Mr. Inglesino, what is spot zoning?
Spot zoning is when a legislative body makes an unreasonable arbitrary and capricious decision.
Thank you.
Without basis, in planning principles, to zone a particular piece of property. As I indicated, there will be a planning report that will be received by the council in consideration with this matter.
Hi, Lauren Armenti, 92 Hillside Terrace in Parsippany. I just wanted to say a few things. I am in favor of the project. Two things, if you know where my address is, I have a shopping center in my backyard. And my husband, who is a police officer in the town, they do live in the town, we have a big, you know, a semi-big shopping center in our town, a very, very busy, very, very busy one, yet we made a conscious decision to buy our home. We love our home. We, you know, we have traffic, we have some noise, but we still really have a very pleasurable experience in our house. And we chose to move to Parsippany. We could have moved anywhere else when we got married and we chose Parsippany and we love our house. And living by the shopping center has not had a negative impact on our life whatsoever. And Green Hill Plaza is very, very busy. Now, it's not, I get it, it's not on the grand scale of what this project will be, but I do have a personal experience of living near, you know, a shopping center. And I do believe that bringing jobs is important. I do understand your comment, Mayor, about bringing jobs to Parsippany. I understand it's not going to give a job to every person in Parsippany. I understand your comment that it's not going to guarantee an every job for every person. But I do believe it will bring a lot of jobs to high school students and college students in the town, not just, you know, just, you know, other people out of work. I work in a school system and I see a lot of kids coming out of high school, going into college that need jobs, and I think that's a great opportunity for them as well. So, thank you.
Bob Crawford, 35 Hidden Glen Drive, Parsippany. There's been a lot of discussion this evening about jobs and it's a very interesting discussion. And as I'm listening and trying to get information, I'm concluding there are only going to be two types of jobs. One, jobs that are associated with the construction of the project. Once that construction is completed, those jobs will go away. And the second kinds of jobs are the jobs that will be there for the people who would work in Whole Foods and the other establishments. So I'm looking at this as there being two different types of jobs. My question, Mr. Mayor, is specifically, what type of information about the jobs have you received?
Well, you just said it. There's going to be construction jobs, which we know there's going to be. Whole Foods only builds with union workers. Okay? So you know that.
I understand that.
So I met with Whole Foods and basically they said how they hire jobs. Now, when the jobs come, Whole Foods will employ individuals. The Big Box will employ individuals. I don't sit there and hire the people, but they will do that and hire approximately, like it's a total, and I don't want to give you the number if I'm wrong, because I know you'll come back and say I'm wrong, about maybe 300 to 400 jobs.
So you're committing to the public?
I'm not committing nothing to the public.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I finish? I'm making a statement. Would you be kind enough to let me finish?
We have construction jobs that are going to come.
Mr. Mayor, may I finish my question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. You are making a statement that indeed part of the value-add proposition with regard to putting up these, this structure, is that it will bring jobs to Parsippany. You have said that. Now, what I am asking you is that certainly you have gone back to the various institutions that want to build in Parsippany and determine the number and types of jobs that will come to Parsippany so that you understand the value-add proposition. So let me ask you again. Have you had conversations and can you provide specific information to the residents of Parsippany about the value-add with regard to the types and the numbers of jobs?
I can't give you specifics, but what I can give you is this. It's going to create construction jobs as we know.
I understand that. The construction jobs go away afterwards.
It's going to create full-time as well as part-time.
How many and what kind?
I can't give you a number tonight.
Can you, have you asked the question?
I cannot give you a number.
Have you asked the question, Mr. Mayor?
No, because it's not part of my process right now. It's an overlay.
Mr. Mayor, you have brought up the fact that the residents of Parsippany should support this because there will be jobs. I am now asking you, have you done your, Mr. Mayor, let me finish. You owe me that right. Have you done your due diligence to determine the types and the numbers of jobs? If you haven't, then indeed you cannot sit there and tell us the scope of the value-add. The other question I would have to the council members, if you have not got this information, this critical information in terms of why this project might be of value to Parsippany, then cease and desist until you require this mayor to provide you with the information that you need to vote in a way that makes sense. This is absurd. This is asking you and then us to trust. I think right now, because the mayor can't answer a simple question and it's a question that he should have asked every employer, this should stop. Thank you very much.
Mr. Council President, if I might, and for the benefit of the public, I think that we have to understand that what is before the council is a proposal for a zone change. The number of jobs, under the law, the number of jobs that would be created contrary to what the speaker asserted is not a critical element for legal purposes in terms of determining whether a zone change is permitted or whether it is spot zoning to the point made prior. What is critical and what is relevant are planning considerations. That is why the council will hear from its planner, Mr. Snikus, at the public hearing and that is why Mr. Snikus will be providing a planning report. Now, yes, there are other ancillary, so to jobs, I don't mean to say that jobs is an ancillary societal issue, but certainly jobs are an ancillary issue in the legal context of the appropriateness of a zone change. So I don't want there to be and there shouldn't be, for legal purposes, an overemphasis on jobs created. What is most relevant or critical, to use your word, Mr. Crawford, is the planning report and the testimony or the presentation that the council will be hearing from its planner at the next meeting.
Nancy Detered, 41 Lake Drive. Actually, thank you very much, Mr. Inglesino, because you're the person I would like to address since you do seem to do all the speaking on behalf of the Water View issues. I actually, I attended the agenda meeting for this meeting and our group, the Citizens for Health, Safety and Welfare, were the ones who actually really brought to the forefront the issue of economic issues of why would you even want to rezone? Why would you pursue that? Why would you introduce something without appropriate information on the economic impact, the fiscal impact and all of that kind of thing? You're saying, "Well, save it for the, save the traffic, save the this, save everything for site review." No, now is the time to know exactly why you're rezoning. Here's my problem. After we had several people from the Citizens for Health, Safety and Welfare come up and address the council and you were there and we all talked about the economic impact. At the very, very end, at about 11:00 at night, you said, "Oh, yeah, we have a draft, we're working on a draft study of the economic impact." I thought, "Okay, that's good. At least you're working on it." So we decided to put in a Freedom of Information request. Now, here's what happened. We asked for any and all finalized and draft copies of all reviews, analyses, studies, reports, reviews, correspondence, emails or other documents regarding the fiscal, financial or economic impact of the viability of the proposed Water View rezoning. The response came back yesterday, about 5:00. No such record is in the custody or control of the township. Question number two, any and all budget authorizations made for any fiscal, financial or economic cost-benefit analyses, reports or studies of the proposed Water View rezoning ordinance? Answer came back, no such government record exists. Next question, any and all documents showing the name or names of any or all persons, government divisions or governing bodies that authorized or approved any of the documents referred to in section B above? Again, no such government record exists. Any and all documents showing how any documents referred to in the first section were to be funded or paid for, because I think when you're working with the government, you've got to somehow get money to authorize these. No such government record exists. And finally, any and all agreements, correspondence, email or other written communication with Bellmead, the owner of the Water View property, or RD Realty, the developer of the Water View property, to fund in whole or in part any such fiscal impact study, review, report, analysis as referred to above. And finally, no such government record exists. So, I don't really understand why we've not been given the honest response on this. And again, if you all don't have sufficient information on which to introduce a very, very important rezoning ordinance, why don't you put it off? Why don't you wait until you all have enough information? Thank you.
I'm at 75 Forest Drive. And this development, this change, this variance, is in my backyard. I'm within 200 feet of this property. One, and I have a lot of concerns with this, such as the pollution and the traffic and the noise and everything that's going to go on with it. The fact that a Whole Foods and two box stores means that this area is going to be busy now, basically 24/7, 365 days a year. And this is impacting not only myself, but all of my neighbors within this community. Now, I've been a resident in town for 25 years and I've been in my house for 13. When I bought the property, we were told that originally there was a 200-foot buffer zone, all right? 200 feet. Just recently, I've learned that way back, 30 years ago, when they developed the office space, they put that 200-foot buffer zone in trying to keep the brook from overflowing. If you shorten that, if you shorten that zone and put up blacktop so all of that runoff goes, what guarantees are there that this won't flood not only my property, but my neighbors all down the block? Okay? Because once this is here, and gentlemen, I'm a union man myself, but this is my backyard, okay? Why? How can you just do this without knowing that we're not going to flood out? What about our concerns? All right? That's my biggest problem right now, tonight. What are we going to do if it floods? Once this thing is built, it's there. The construction men will go someplace else, the developers will go someplace else, but we won't.
Sir, let me, sir, if I may, let me attempt to alleviate your concern. DEP regulations require that there be no net runoff from one property to another. So under the law of the state of New Jersey, at site plan, the applicant will be compelled by law to prove to the planning board that the development of its site will not increase runoff, stormwater runoff, from its site onto any adjoining property. That's the law of the state. So the developer will have to build appropriate retention and detention basins so that there will be no increase in flooding to your property or to any other property. If they can't prove that at the planning board level, then that would be a basis for the board to deny the application. So I don't want you to think, or any of the members of the public to be under the impression that just because a property is being rezoned for a particular use, that that provides, you know, risk of increased water flow runoff or flooding. The laws of the state of New Jersey do not permit that. And again, the applicant will be forced to prove that there will be no net runoff in its site plan proposal before the planning board at the time of site plan.
Okay. Now, if I may, how do they go about proving that? And here's the kick. What if they're wrong?
Well, you know, the way they go about proving it is they have to provide fully engineered plans in accordance with your local ordinances and in accordance with state standards. And those plans will be reviewed by the township's engineering professionals to ensure that they meet the DEP requirements. That's a pretty, at this point, it's a pretty standard operating procedure. Every applicant knows and every qualified engineer knows that they have to comply with those requirements.
All right. That may be. What happens, though, if it doesn't? What happens if they're wrong? What happens if the weather changes and the patterns come in and the rains get heavier?
You know, typically, again, you're talking about meeting very stringent DEP requirements. I'm not an engineer. I can't, you know, they have to meet the requirements. I can tell you that typically, developed properties typically end up, you know, decreasing the amount of runoff because typically they're, you know, they're required to capture water. And I've been through enough planning board meetings, both
If I may, though, one last point to your point. If, in fact, they are wrong, as was proven, this last go-around with Sandy, where they had certain standards for houses being raised, and things change, now those standards have been up again.
Well, I don't think that that's an accurate comparison, what you're talking about. In Hurricane Sandy, you know, had to do with—really, that's apples and oranges. What they're going to have to do is they're going to have to comply with current state-of-the-art DEP standards with regard to runoff. And they're not going to be able to have any water runoff onto your property. And again, they're going to have to build appropriate detention and retention basins to demonstrate that. And you will be notified—you live within 200 feet of the property—you will receive individual notice before any site plan application proceeds. So you will have an opportunity to review the plans, to participate at the hearings, to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses, and participate in that regard.
I will be back, as I have been to all of the others. Thank you.[671.11][671.11](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Robin Ledwinski, and I lived at 65 Forest Drive. I've lived there for over 20 years. I'd like to begin with a quote. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, to ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." It seems to me that the council and this local government seems to forget this. If the residents of Parsippany are against this proposal, why are you moving forward with it? You say there will be no more traffic, no more problems with traffic. Really? Will we, the people, know that it's impossible to get down Route 46 or Route 202 during rush hour? You say that it will bring more business to Parsippany. Will we, the people, feel that you can go to a Target store in East Hanover on Route 10, one on Route 46 in Fairford, or one in Rockaway Mall? Very close. Also, if you take research and you look at how Target's business has been in the last few years, they are laying people off, not employing people. You say that Whole Foods is going to come into this. Will we, the people, have enough grocery stores? We have Pathmark, we have A&amp;P, we have ShopRite, we have Kings, all within a five-mile radius. If any of you ever go into shop for organic food, extremely expensive. You take research and look at the demographics and psychographics of the people for the average that live in Parsippany, they really can't afford organic food. We, the people, would like to know—if you have it, Cristobal, and we'd like to know how you can tell us that our schools will not be overcrowded. You know exactly who are going to be moving into these townhouses with how many children? We, the people, would like to know how you will keep crime down while there'll be more people from all over now in our backyards. We, the people, want to know how you can ruin the environment for us, our children, and the future residents of Parsippany. We, the people, bought our homes, knowing we had a buffer, and it was zoned for an office. We do not want this. We, the people, have the right not to have this monstrous project in our backyards. Put it somewhere where there's room. We, the people, will be happy to vote all of you out in November if you pass this. We are the people of Parsippany, and we do not want this.[810.13][810.13](APPLAUSE).
Hello. Curtis Hardenberg, 85 Red Gate Road. Couple of things. You said—I've been at all the planning board meetings, and you said it'll go back to the planning board, and they'll look at it, there'll be expert witnesses. I can go to one doctor, it's a rotator cuff. I can go to the other doctor, it's bursitis. Their witnesses can say anything they want to say to make it look good to you. We're not allowed to bring any witnesses. We tried. So what good is that? What good is it with the witnesses when they're all their witnesses?
Do you have anything further, sir? And I'll—
I'm going to—yes, a little more.
Why don't you—so that you don't take your time.
Okay. You said it shouldn't be based on whether there's jobs or taxes, the way this group is going to vote. What's it based on, then? You can answer that one.
Okay. What I've indicated is, is that the primary rationale for a zone change is that the zone change is consistent with and furthers legitimate land use planning goals and principles, both of the municipality and in elements of planning generally. That is the most critical criteria legally in determining whether a zoning change is permissible or whether it is spot zoning. And that is why the council will hear from its planner at the next meeting and will receive a planning report. This is a legislative process, so the extent to which the council seeks to put additional weight on economic benefits, jobs, et cetera, is an individual determination to be made by each member of the governing body, and they can put as much weight or as little weight on those factors as they would like. But the factors that they must consider legally in order for the zone change to be permissible are those planning concepts and principles that I discussed a moment ago. And again, that is why the council will be hearing from its planner. With regard to witnesses, and I understand that the land use process in New Jersey is rather cumbersome. Nobody up here can take credit for that, but let me—if I can—try to just give you a little information. The first planning board process was to vet a concept plan. The concept plan was just that. It was the beginning of a dialogue between a developer and a municipality about thoughts about what could go on a particular piece of property. The plans are not fully engineered. There's no, you know, checklist items that have to be received by the municipality. It's concept. The next phase of the process is this, the zoning process. Introduction, planning board review, only for consistency with the master plan, and then public hearing and adoption, assuming for the moment that the ordinance goes through those processes and is passed.
Oh, it will. If it goes through here, it's going through there.
I'm just assuming that for purposes of this discussion. Then the developer would have to submit fully conforming engineered site plans to the planning board. Once that happens, you would receive public notice—if you live within 200 feet, you would get an individual notice, there would be notice in the mail, and there would be a hearing. At that hearing, the applicant would present witnesses. By law, in that proceeding, you have the right to both cross-examine witnesses of the applicant, and you have the right to present your own expert witnesses.
That was not the way it went.
If you—well, it hasn't gotten to that stage yet. Again, you—you—
We were told at one meeting, you can bring witnesses. At the following meeting, when witnesses were there, they were not allowed to speak.
Sir, 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 you haven't gotten to that stage yet. Again—
Why did they tell us then, at one meeting, you're allowed to have witnesses, and the following meeting, nobody's allowed to call?
I can't—I can't—I can't speak for the planning board. I could just tell you generally—
Well, I could tell you one thing. They were very rude, number one. Their lawyer was very rude, and they—we were told one thing, and another thing went on.
Right.
Once it gets passed here, it's going through there.
Okay.
You can tell a witness anything. They will walk up there, their engineer will say, "Oh, yeah, it's wonderful, it's beautiful." Their traffic expert, "Oh, yeah, it's wonderful, it's beautiful." Once it goes past you guys, that's it. It's done. So you guys better really, really think how you handle this.[1076.58][1076.58](APPLAUSE).
Again, sir, your time's up, sir.
You're talking about traffic. Their traffic expert gets up there, "Oh, there'll be no traffic."
Sir, your time's up. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.[1086.08][1086.08](APPLAUSE).
Again, if there is a group that—if it progresses to the planning board phase for site plan approval, as a matter of law, you have the opportunity not only to cross-examine witnesses of the applicant, but as objectors, you also have the right to put on your own case with your own witnesses and your own experts.
Sir, now, I can—
I would assume that—that would be a basis— Well, that was for concept plan. When it—
They said, "One week you could, a half week we can't."
But again—
The witness was not allowed to speak. That is wrong.
Right. Sir, again, you—the first—the first time you were at the planning board, or the developer was at the planning board, and I apologize, council president, but I think it's an important point to make, because there should be public awareness and confidence in at least the process. For a concept plan, there is no right, you know, for witnesses and so forth. At the—
We can change one line.
Again, I can't—I don't represent the planning board. I can't speak for the planning board. I'm just giving you the law. But what I'm telling you is, if this project progresses to site plan, then as a matter of law, you will have the right to present witnesses and expert testimony and to put on an objector case. That's guaranteed under the municipal land use law. And if you're not permitted to do that, and your lawyer will tell you that that is a legitimate basis for an appeal. So you will have that opportunity at the site plan phase.
Hi, my name is Jessica Tamala. I'm at 80 Todd Road. First of all, I'd like to welcome the unions. My father—[1200.01][1200.01](APPLAUSE). My father is actually in the local electrical union for 15 years on Parsippany Road, so I see a few members from there, and then the plumbing union. So I'd like to welcome you to the meeting. Thank you for being involved. For people who say that this is not temporary work, it actually is. I can attest that I've—through my father, I have known that, you know, they bring in the union, okay? So the plumbers and the electricians, and they bring them in, they lay the foundation, and they do a great job, and then, once that's finished, they hire other workers who are, you know, less expensive. And so that is temporary work, and that's only a matter of time. Also, I'd like to remind everybody here that 30 years ago, our town plan was created to prevent this from happening, and it is zoned for office buildings, which office buildings still create work. You would still—we would still welcome you.[1268.65][1268.65](APPLAUSE). I can—I'm sure we would still welcome you, and that's great, and that would still, you know, keep you guys employed and feeding your families, which I know a lot of you, you know, are concerned about. So that's not the problem. And I'd also like to just end with that these ramifications for this development are permanent, okay? They're irreversible, and I just—I'd really like for you to advocate for us and just hear our concerns. So thank you.[1301.26][1301.26](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Margaret Gossett from Mountain Lakes. I have a question, for the councilman only. How many of you have seen a floodplain map for Parsippany? And do you know—can you—can anyone speak to the—to where some of this flooding currently The Troy Brook is part of the floodplain, and on the other side of Route 46, near the cinema, it floods all the time, regardless of the NJDEP stormwater management rules. If you pave over 80% of a woodland that currently acts as a sponge, because it's a highly efficient aquifer recharge zone, that runoff is going to go into an area that's already considered a floodplain. And mechanical systems fail all the time, so the flooding that goes on there today is going to increase. Currently, there are residents on Forest Drive that experience high water in their yards with the intense rains that we have. And actually, some of the rains that we've experienced this summer have flooded some of the yards. So this construction is going to increase the flooding and create a public health and safety issue for the residents in Parsippany. I have another question. I wanted to know, why are several million dollars of Parsippany's open space funds earmarked for improvements at the Mount Taber's Golf Course and Clubhouse? And why would you spend valuable open space money for a golf course and related capital improvements when Parsippany already has another golf course with two 18-hole courses on it?[1458.65][1458.65](APPLAUSE).
We're not up to that. We're not there.
There's nothing on our agenda.
Yeah, we don't even have any of that, that you're speaking of.
Okay. Thank you.[1472.76][1472.76](APPLAUSE).
I'm Steve Arnold. I live at Fort Craven Road, which is about 300 feet in Mountain Lakes. I'm in Mountain Lakes from the property, and I've spoken before here. I'm going to change the orientation a little bit. My issues are about the ordinance itself and the use of overlay versus just modifying the ordinance, if you want to allow other uses or whatever. In the ordinance, there's statement of objectives, there are permitted uses, prohibitive uses, there's accessory uses, there's conditional uses. Well, what's the reason for doing an overlay ordinance? So I'm hoping you—people will discuss that, and why it's going overlay. Where it could be, if you want to add Whole Foods or Box Retail or whatever, it could go into the conditional uses place. And in conditional uses, it can say, "Well, it's a condition," but the condition is that they have to prove that the impacts are acceptable, et cetera. One thing I would put into the ordinance is, the developer has to present what he could do with the office development, and then he can present his conditional use and show how it is an improvement, or at least not a worsening of the impacts relative to the overall office building concept. So conditional uses—why isn't it conditional uses instead of overlay ordinance? Then the other thing, height, area, and other bulk requirements, which include the buffer zone of 200 feet and adhere to property line where the elevation is at least 360 feet. Pay attention to that, and the environmental impacts. Those are being totally overturned in this new ordinance. Those height, area, and other bulk requirements should be mandated to be retained, no matter what the development is, whether it's office buildings, or townhouses, or Whole Foods, or Box Retail, or whatever. It should say Article 430-155 is still valid in all cases.[1610.01][1610.01](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
Yes, my name is Lori Cancelieri, 242 Pittman Road, Parsippany. I just had a ques—you answered most of my question, Mr. Iglesias, and I had one more thing to ask you about that. How does the public get their hands on the records? Like, how does the public get their hands on the expert's testimony, the documents that you were mentioning that we can get when both sides present their case? At what point and how do we get, you know, copies of these documents?
Well, again, in terms of the process, there's not a process of competing experts. What this is, is a legislative determination, and so the council will be hearing from its planner, and presumably something from its traffic expert, at the—at the public hearing portion. I would envision that there will be some sort of fiscal impact statement, as well as a planning report, that would be distributed to the governing body in advance of September 17th. I don't know exactly when—that will occur, but it'll certainly be in advance of September 17th.
But how do we go about, you know, getting—the experts, you know, the reports on the specifics, as to do with heavy metal contamination, the economic impact, things like that?
Well, I don't envision that there will be reports on ethanol contamination. I think that you would find reports that would be appropriate for a zone change, and that would be a planning report, that would be some sort of an economic impact analysis, presumably so that the council could be assured that this would be a positive tax ratable for the municipality, since that is, I think, something that folks would want to see, and also that there would be some baseline report with regard to traffic. Again, some of the contamination issues are certainly appropriate for the planning board in some cases, in some cases, they're more appropriate for the DEP.
Okay. Thank you.
And certainly, if anybody has information that they want the council to consider in advance of the public hearing, they can certainly submit it.
Okay. It won't be too late by September 17th?
Well, September 17th, again, is the—is the night of— in some cases, in some cases, they're more appropriate for the DEP.
Okay.
And certainly, if anybody has information that they want the council to consider, in advance of the public hearing, they can certainly submit it.
Okay. It won't be too late by September 17th?
Well, September 17th, again, is the, is the night of the public hearing. So folks will be given an opportunity to, to come up to the microphone, and they'll be given a certain period of time to say whatever it is they want to say. There is certainly nothing to preclude members from the public from making submissions to the council for the council to review prior to the 17th, if that's what you would like to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
John Bular, 51 Intervale Road, Parsippany. I'd like to thank you all. I've gotten to meet all of you council members. Thank you for your continued service. It's a tough crowd tonight. Hope you're enjoying your summer. I've got a few simple questions for the council. I'm going to make it easy. Simple answers are easy enough. Show of hands, you could just raise your hand for yes. So, first question is, have you seen a financial study? I think it was said that the mayor had Dan run some numbers on the impact of this project. I know a nice lady got up earlier, so show of hands if anybody's seen any numbers crunched regarding this project and the tax revenue or anything. So, nobody's seen any?
Just verbally.
Any, okay. Did you read the traffic study paid for by the area of residents and submitted to the town? Show of hands if anybody's seen the traffic study that people are referring to.
Verbally. I saw someone testify on it when I was actually at the meetings.
Okay. It's, it's published. It was provided to Mr. Iglesiano and addressed to him. It's available on our website. So I guess really only Paul had, okay, great. Are you aware of the net negative economic impact of big box stores on the local economy? Okay, so nobody's really aware of the net negative impact of big box on the local?
We had people at our last meeting came up and spoke about that.
Okay. Do you know how a project of this magnitude will affect crime and infrastructure of the town? Raise your hand if you know this will negatively, okay. Thank you. Are you, does this, does the current zoning for planned office development negatively impact the town? Raise your hand for yes if the...
Negative, no. Does it benefit or negative? No.
Okay. So no negative impact to the current zoning. Okay. Hmm. Does, does the current zoning for this piece of land need to be changed? Raise your hand for yes.
I can't get it.
Okay. If not, then why would we consider a project with so many negative implications? Are, are all jobs good jobs? I'll repeat the question. Are all jobs good jobs? Raise your hand for yes. Okay, moving on then. Does this have to be introduced tonight? Does this have to be introduced tonight? If, if so, raise your hand if this has to be introduced tonight. If, if not, then why don't, why don't we answer some of these questions that should be answered before, I think, a vote is taken on such an important issue? That's all. I appreciate your service. Thank you for your time.
I live within the 200 feet. You probably know that. I have more property adjoining this lot and block than any other resident in Parsippany. I also have the Troy Brook in my backyard, and I do want to say for the record that it does flood. Usually, when there's about three inches of rain, my yard gets completely flooded by the brook. What's of great concern to me is the environmental report that Bell Mead did on this tract of land 30 years ago stated that we need a 200-foot buffer to prevent the flooding of the Troy Brook. We have a 200-foot buffer now, and it's still not sufficient. And I understand there are laws that prescribe water can go from this property to that property. I also understand reality, and I want to make sure that my property doesn't get any worse flooding, and I'd be happy to provide photos to this body or to the planning board of the flooding, of me standing at my knees in my side yard in water. I also want to give a little perspective. Some very nice lady said she lived next to a strip mall earlier tonight, and that they knew what they were getting into when they bought the house, and it's noisy, and there's lights, and there's some traffic, and it's not that bad. That's great. That was her reality. She knew what she was buying when she bought it. I knew what I was buying when I bought 263 Intervale Road. I was buying a piece of land up against a corporate park, meeting traffic maybe Monday through Friday, nine to five. Nothing on the weekends. That's what I bought. Those were the rules at the time. And now developers coming in and saying, those rules don't matter anymore, play by these rules. I've already bought my piece of land. We've been doing this a long time. It's been many months I've been coming up here talking to you guys. I'm tired of it. This is a, this is a very special piece of land. The residents think this is a special piece of land for their reasons. The developer thinks, RDR thinks it's a special piece of land. We were told tonight it's a developer's dream, and that's great. I understand the reasons why. But what you have tonight in front of you is a yes or no, up-down vote. Are you going to build a dream or create a nightmare? Because by building a dream for someone, you're creating a nightmare for a lot of people who'll be living there for a very long time. There are a lot of questions that were asked of you tonight that no one had an answer to, and I understand there may be time in the process, but I also understand that's a way to get the vote passed tonight. And once it goes to the planning board, we know what's next. We know what's next. We sat in the planning board at Parsippany High this summer, when they said, in one meeting, your expert can testify, and the next meeting, the expert stood up and they told him to sit down. I'm not going through that nightmare again. Kill it tonight.
The four individuals here now are the last four for the public session. It's going to be the, speaking plus to three in line.
Good evening. Sal Simonetti, 53 Glenwood Avenue, Lake Hiawatha, born and raised. Just had a couple of questions. Don't need to be asked them now, don't need to answer them at this time, but just going to rattle them off. What's wrong with companies and businesses wanting to come to Parsippany? What's wrong with homeowners buying houses in Parsippany when they do the residential areas? What's wrong with ratables in New Jersey? What's wrong with people wanting to live in Parsippany, New Jersey is beyond me? What's wrong with construction jobs? What's wrong with permanent jobs? What's wrong with part-time jobs when kids come home from college and they need to put a couple bucks in their pockets for gas money? What's wrong with this? I don't know, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Aina Rose. I have 47 Howell Road. I've never been to one of these before, so I just want to understand the process. So you guys are going to introduce this ordinance tonight?
No.
Right? And then one more time, and you vote on it next time on September 17th?
What's under consideration tonight, again, the lawmaking process at the local level involves the passage of an ordinance, which is a two-step process, or in this instance, really a three-step process. Step one is an introduction of the ordinance. That's what's being considered tonight. If there's a yes vote tonight on the introduction, it does not mean that the ordinance becomes law. It just means that it progresses to the next phase of the process. The second phase of the process is that the ordinance will be referred to the planning board, and the planning board will make a determination as to whether or not the zone is consistent with the current master plan. The planning board will submit its findings to the council, and then on September 17th will be the final step of the process, at which there will be a public hearing. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. The council will hear brief presentations from certain of its professionals, and then the governing body will deliberate and then vote. At that night, if they pass the ordinance, then, then it will have passed the legislative process, and then under this form of government, the ordinance would either have, would be, would be signed by, by the mayor, and it would become law.
Okay, so that leaves in, in 30 days, of which a lot of people probably on vacation, all the council members are going to perform the fiscal impact study that everybody's asking for?
No. What I indicated was that the town, town's planner, Mr. Snikus, would be preparing a planning report, as well as a fiscal impact statement, and that those reports would be delivered to the council for their review at some time prior to the meeting on September 17th. And those professionals, Mr. Snikus and Mr. Meth, who's the traffic expert for the town, would be available to make a brief presentation and answer any questions that the council members may have of them.
And does, is everybody here in the room that's concerned about the fiscal impact going to be able to see the study ahead of that September 17th meeting?
Typically, confer with the council president about that. You know, it would be up to them as to whether or not they would want to release the reports to the public or when they wanted to do that. This is not a planning board process. In other words, for those of you, again, who are used to the planning board, but, I mean, you know, there's going to be a presentation made, an oral presentation made for the public on the fiscal impact and on the planning report, so...
But, I mean, I'm an accountant underneath, do different stuffs now, but it takes a lot to go through a fiscal impact study to figure out all the different things that are going to be affected, all the different people here that have asked for more cops, how about the jobs, what about the ratables, what about the schools, what about the sewers? I mean, it seems like it's a way bigger project than you have in 30 days, that then the group wouldn't be able to look at the numbers, not audit them, but kind of question them, where'd you get them from? And maybe if somebody else on this table could talk and answer? How do you guys feel about having, I don't know, Paul or Brian, would you have enough time to really understand the fiscal impact study before the September 17th meeting?
Yeah. I would like it at least two weeks in advance, and at the same time, we have a website for a reason. I think it should be on the website so that people could read everything and come back with their questions. Any other council members have a problem with that?
No.
All right. I think we should have it two weeks in advance, and I'd like everything on our website. That's what it's for.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, 846 Paul Drive. First, I want to thank everybody. Arduous task, obviously, listening. There's a lot of emotions in the room, and sometimes emotions get with people, and, and it's difficult for you, and I want to thank you for trying your best to get facts out, because, you know, as, as the joke goes, 93.2% of all facts are just made up. Okay. Get it? All right. Anyway, getting to the facts, though, is very difficult, and it's an emotional thing, so I want to thank you for taking the time. But I also want you to remember the fact that 50 years ago, a lot of different people couldn't have lived here, and a lot of property was zoned farmland, and a lot of different things happened, and progress happens. And we can't predict the future. And a lot of people said to you that, can you guarantee me this, and can you guarantee me that? Well, the fact is, the only guarantee is that someday we're going to meet our maker. And we can't guarantee things, but we can use our brains. We can decide that a corporation and a company's not going to spend a lot of money thinking they're just going to close their doors and not hire anybody. That doesn't make sense. The fact is, this is just one of many legal steps. This just allows things to happen. The stuff that I hear that people are, oh, this is going to happen, and that's going to happen, they'll have that fair and reasonable and legal opportunity to raise those points if, in fact, that property does. And we all know that vacant land has more opportunity to create flooding than developed land for the very reasons that you stated up there. Go ahead, yell at me. Let me tell you, you, you want to talk to me? Let me tell you another fact.
Sir, sir, sir.
I know, I know.
Address.
Let me tell you, I don't appreciate that, because I didn't do it with any of the other speakers. And I heard people talk about these construction jobs being temporary jobs. Let me tell you, there's people losing their houses in town here today. There's people who can't feed their families, and somebody who's maybe from out of town or maybe from in town's going to decide that my friends and my brothers and sisters can't get a job, and my neighbor can't get a job because they've decided this project isn't good? They've decided that a temporary job, you know what? What about the EMT? It's a temporary job for them to come to your house and save your life, because someday you're going to die. Some people live their whole life working temporary jobs. That's what a construction worker does. And to sit here and minimize that, and to tell these people who are trying to make a living to feed their families and support their town, that that's just a minimum job is just wrong. Thank you for your time and for all your hard work. God bless you.
Okay. Sir, just before you start, I just wanted to give the heads up to everybody in the audience. With the holiday in September, it'll be placed on the website, and we'll receive it at least 10 days in advance. So it'll be 10 days, not two weeks.
First, I'd like to thank you for affording me to speak tonight. My name is Mike Paul Sinelli, 50 Parsippany Road. I'm a business agent for the IBW Local 102. I represent 3,500 members. I roughly have 500 members out of work for anywheres between a year and two years at this, at this point. This project would definitely be a major impact for all the building trades, also full-time jobs, like, like everybody else was saying, at Whole Foods and at different venues and stores that are going to be there. They don't just build stores without impact studies, DEP studies. I mean, there's all kinds of studies that have to be done before they're going to build these stores. I understand everybody's concerned, but you got to understand that the architects are involved, the DEPs involved, the buffer zones are involved. So this isn't something that they just stick in the ground and then walk away from and flood your, flood your properties. So I am in support of this. I know my local union, my brothers and sisters, and all the building trades are in support of this, so I hope you take this under serious consideration, and thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public. Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, before I go to the consent agenda, I'd like to remove our 2013-172 from the consent agenda. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
I need a motion.
I'm making a motion that we remove. Second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Consent agenda, be resolved. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member is so request, which case the item be removed from the consent agenda, considering its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion by myself? Second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance is for introduction. Ordinance 2013, colon 25. Mr. Nelson.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 169 Fire Prevention by the addition of a new section, 169-19.2, identifying emblems and lightweight construction and establishing a new fee in 169-18 of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced and read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 17, 2013, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time, all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon 26. Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 169 Fire Prevention by the addition of a new section, 169-19.2, identifying emblems and lightweight construction and establishing a new fee in 169-18 of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced and read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building, at the Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon 27, Mr. Karifi.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, amending the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Code, Chapter 372, Taxi Cabs and Limousines. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon 28, Mr. Nelson.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 430, zoning of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, adding a new article, 59, establishing an RCR-planned retail-commercial-residential overlay district and designating certain boundaries in the township.
Second.
Oh, didn't get there. We're not done. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Before I vote, I'd like to make a couple comments. One, to the union workers, I have a lot of friends that are in the union, and I've stated all along that I think that we should be filling our empty retail and office space that we have, and if we need to refurbish, reconstruct buildings that we currently have, that would in turn bring work for union workers. That being said, like I've stated from the very beginning with this, I feel that the impact on the quality of life to the residents of Parsippany, traffic issues, economic issues on other local businesses, that this is going to have, I think, far outweighs the positives for this project, and I vote no.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
People aren't going to like this answer, but an introduction is not adoption. We're not voting on the ordinance. Many times, ordinances are introduced, and they are not passed, so just be mindful of that. Yes for introduction.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes for introduction on the same. I want to see the studies. I want to see the impact on everything, and this is just a process. This is not a final vote whatsoever, so I'm voting yes. Ordinance 2013, colon 30, Mr. Karifi. Oh, wait. Nope. Ordinance 2013, colon 29, Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, amending the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Code Sessions 4-34, fees governing services rendered by off-duty police officers, and 405-7, traffic controls for street and highway construction and maintenance operations for municipal roads. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon 30, Mr. Karifi.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 430, zoning of the code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, establishing prohibited uses in residential districts and establishing violations and penalties. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 20, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on September 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the Parsippany Hills High School, 20 Rita Drive, in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolutions, non-consent agenda, R. 2013-180, Mr. Nelson.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, placing a lien on a particular property for failure to obey dangerous conditions on property, Block 514, Lot 7, which is 3 Oneida Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. R. 2013-181, Mr. DiPiero.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, supporting the drive sober or get pulled over, 2013 statewide crackdown.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-182, Mr. Karifi.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing the insertion of a special item of revenue in the current fund budget, drive sober or get pulled over, 2013 statewide crackdown.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to add resolution R. 2013-183 and R. 2013-184.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero. R. 2013-183, Mr. Nelson.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Yeah, I have to read them.
No. Motion to add, so...
We added yes, and now we're going forward with the reading.
Did you do a roll call?
A roll call on the motion, sorry. Jumped in.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-183, Mr. Nelson.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, consenting